As edge of seeds from side Yes, we're giving it a check.
Check one two, one two. Check one two, one two. Check one two, one two.
Okay, so the link.
That's the link, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna mark this, I'm gonna... Okay, go away.
That's it, yup, yup.
Unbludgeled, it's safe. You are... Oh, thank you!
Well, that was pretty good, too.
There you go. What's your point?
Nah, actually, I should be here with you.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, yeah. And you'll regard him as a friend. I have to...
So, I just dropped the note.
It's awesome.
So I'm, uh, leaving him now.
You're leaving him now, yes. I will just leave her first.
I think it's just...
Good evening and welcome to this Candidates Forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland Heights Chapter, the Heights Libraries, and Future Heights. We're pleased you could all join us tonight. My name is Blanche Valanci and I'm coordinator along with Betsy Tracy of this series of forums. Looking out at a space where dozens of you would be sitting for an ordinary forum, but we are not living in ordinary times. We embrace the opportunity to come to you via livestream or by video recording. The agenda tonight is long with 11 candidates running for two offices. I want to acknowledge our valued partners, the Heights Libraries, who have provided us with the facilities and able technical assistance, and Future Heights, which will be represented tonight by our moderator, Deanna Bremer Fisher. And now it gives me great pleasure to turn the proceedings over to Deanna Bremer Fisher.
Thank you, welcome everyone. My name is Deanna Bremer Fisher and I'm the Executive Director of Future Heights and I'm also a member of the League of Women Voters and I'll be moderating this forum this evening. I'd like to thank all of you for making a concerted effort to become fully informed voters for these local elections, since local government has a major and direct impact on our daily lives. The League of Women Voters, a truly nonpartisan political organization, is recognized for its impartiality and respected role promoting informed and active participation in government and advocating for good government policies. The League is valued by both voters and by candidates and elected officials because it insists upon and makes possible the fair exchange and expression of views upon which democracy depends. The work that the League does is made possible by member dues and donations and the dedication of League volunteers. If you are not a member, we encourage you to join. Membership forms can be found online at our website, www.lwvgreatercleveland.org. I'd like to thank the many members of our League who have worked so hard to organize this forum and would like to especially thank Michael Barron for coordinating the technical side of this evening. The recording of this forum will be made available on the League's website and on the YouTube channel. I'd also like to thank Heights Libraries for providing the venue for tonight's forum and the candidates for agreeing to wear masks so that we could all be in person tonight. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Future Heights. We are a nonprofit community development corporation serving Cleveland Heights and University Heights, dedicated to promoting a vibrant and sustainable future for our community through communication, collaboration, engagement, and empowerment. We publish the Heights Observer Community Newspaper and seek to provide Heights residents with information to make informed decisions. Future Heights and the Heights Observer do not and have not endorsed any candidates for office. You can find a printed copy of the Voters' Guide for the November 2 election in the October issue of the Heights Observer that comes out tomorrow. It's also available online at heightsobserver.org. Our work is made possible by donations from the community and we encourage you to learn more and become involved by visiting futureheights.org. We're going to start tonight's forum with the candidates for mayor from 7:05 to 7:45 and then we'll take a short break to enable the changing of the guard and welcome our candidates for University Heights City Council from 7:50 to 8:40 p.m. Before we begin tonight's forum, let's review the rules. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and one minute for a closing statement. And we will also have a question and answer period and time limits will be enforced. You'll get a warning and then we'll enforce the time limit. Only written questions will be accepted. If you'd like to submit a question for the candidates during the live forum, please send it via email to heights@lwvgreatercleveland.org. The email box is being monitored. League screeners will review the submitted questions, not to block opinions or skew information, but in order to avoid duplication, provide a diversity of questions, and ensure readability and appropriateness. We begin tonight with candidates for mayor of University Heights. Four candidates are running for a four-year term with an annual salary of $75,500. The order for speaking tonight has been determined by drawing lots and we will reverse that order for the closing statements. So we are now going to begin with our candidates and first we are going to hear from Barbara Blankfeld.
I'd like to echo all of the thank yous that were given to the League and to Heights Greater Heights and as well as the Libraries for giving us this opportunity to be seen and heard. Microphone. Thank you very much. Choosing to run for public office should be a selfless, motivated decision. We have residents who I believe are the most important focus we should have. We need to have stricter financial management, more conservative spending, and saving. We need to have more opportunities for our seniors, for our families. There's so much more we could do with the park. And certainly we need to know that all of these things need to be done in a way that is collaborative and cooperative and respectful and believes in the value of everyone's opinion, especially our residents. In the time that I've lived here, the thing that struck me most was the sense of community. And when I ran for council, when now that I'm running for mayor, I have been approached repeatedly at my door, texts, emails, "How can I help? Because we need a change in leadership." And I thank those residents for their support. University Heights is a tremendous city. My husband and I love it very much and we want to do the very best and I know I can do that as mayor. I have the support of directors whom I speak with regularly, with council, and it's a job that is a group effort. It is a team effort. It is not a one-man show or one-woman show. And I hope to have the opportunity to show how it really should be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now hear from Ken Simmons.
Thank you, Deanna. And thanks for moderating the event tonight and thanks again also Future Heights, Heights Libraries for the venue, League of Women Voters, of course, my fellow candidates, and you, the audience. I really appreciate the opportunity to share my views. So I am a graduate of the Levin College at CSU and they teach primarily to work for data-driven decision-making to accomplish goals of equity, economy, efficiency, and effectiveness. It's a balancing act and there's no strict equation. We have to make sure that our shareholders and stakeholders and the residents are part of any of those kinds of decisions that we make. As I went around listening to folks gathering petition signatures, I heard a lot about property taxes, public safety, and street conditions. And so I wanted to, you know, make sure that, as Candidate Blankfeld mentioned, you know, we should have discussions with our staff because I'm sure they have good ideas and I look forward to that. And again, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. We will now hear from Michael Dillon Brennan.
Thank you, Deanna. And thank you to the League of Women Voters, to Future Heights, and the Heights Libraries for hosting this evening. Thank you to all the residents watching and thank you to the other candidates for being here. I'm Michael Dillon Brennan and I've had the honor of serving as your mayor for the last four years. It is amazing how far we have come in that time. We're building new homes again. Our first new home development since the 1970s, South Taylor Place, is underway. We have new homes on former vacant lots. The citywide CRA we started promotes reinvestment in existing homes. We fixed the finance department and the city has had clean audits ever since. We started the Office of Community Policing and initiated a citizen review and updated our use of force and de-escalation policies to help make our city safer. We engage in sustainable practices and in recognition of our ongoing work, I have the endorsement of the Ohio Environmental Council Action Fund. I am a proponent of regionalism and as Chair of our Regional Dispatch Center, I led the way to merge our dispatch center into the larger one, which will both save money and lead to our handling of our own mobile 911 calls, saving time and saving lives. Working together is why my endorsements include County Executive Armin Butish, County Councilwoman Cheryl Stevens, State Senators Sandra Williams and Kenny Uco, State Representative Janine Boyd, CHUH School Board members Jody Serini, Dan Heinz, Mollya Lewis, and Jim Posh, but the endorsement of which I may be most proud of is IAFF Local 974, our own local firefighters' union. The people I work with every day support my reelection. We worked together these last four years to rebuild our fire department, new ladder trucks, a new ladder truck, a new ambulance, a new fire chief on day one, improved staffing and training. We reopened the Fire Prevention Bureau and this was all for public safety and was all to serve you. Most of all, we persevered through the pandemic together. There is a renewed sense of community and progress in University Heights. Coming up, we'll see through the University Square redevelopment deal, update city zoning, make our city safe, equitable, and sustainable. We've only just begun. Thank you.
Thank you. We will next hear from Philip M. Atkins.
Thank you to everyone who sponsored this. I'm going to be pretty quick because I have a lot to say. This is a beautiful city. I'm an urban planner by training. I have a master's in urban planning and did regional planning in Western New York and was a consultant to municipalities and so on. I became a builder. I love building. I lived here for 30 years and I've watched everything that's gone on here. We have two major problems that aren't being addressed. Number one is insane property taxes, among the highest in the country. I searched all over to find any municipality that even near these taxes. We have double what the major municipalities, the major cities have and I could detail all this but another time, but it's huge. And for anyone who has a house, which is the largest investment in their lives, it's a huge tragedy because you're paying more taxes or almost as much taxes as your mortgage. It's got to be changed. The rate, one of the major reasons why, is the school system. The school system is draining most of that money. Very little comes to the city. It's really a tragedy and at the same time, they're not performing the way they should as far as teaching kids. There's a whole generation of kids that have had not the normal skills and are impeded by that in life. And then all of a sudden vouchers came into the scene. And as I walked my dog around the neighborhood, all of a sudden empty streets were full of kids. People were moving in, houses were being rebuilt, people were investing in houses. Yes, there were new houses being built because it was worth it. And it made a huge change, but no one is advocating it from this, from anyone in the in the in the community. No one is standing behind it, no one is pushing it, and it's tragic. We can solve these problems, we can address these problems, we can expand vouchers, we can have better schools, we can we can use our abilities to do to do good things. So I hope that we can work on these things together and I'm certainly ready to do it.
Okay, thank you. Candidates, we are now in our Q and A period. And for the question and answer period, I want to remind the candidates to please stay within the allotted time period of one minute for each response. If there's a question that's directed to one candidate, that candidate will have one minute to respond and other candidates can also respond for 30 seconds as a follow-up. So we're going to begin with questions that we have received prior to the event and we are going to begin with garbage collection. What do you think is the ideal garbage collection system for University Heights? Are you in favor of levying fines against residents who leave trash on their lawns or charging larger households higher fees for garbage collection? So let's begin with Barbara Blankfeld.
Thank you. As I've walked these neighborhoods over these many months, that is what someone jokingly referred to as the third rail. It's the topic that is hotly contested. To change the method of trash collection, it will be paid for whichever method is used. You have to find a way to do it economically. However, the people who work in the service department, who are protected by those collective bargaining agreements, must be kept on and it should be left up to the voters. Residents should decide how they want to see this method move forward. It's been kicked around for years and we want to have residents decide and then we'll move forward accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Dillon Brennan.
Yes, thank you. One of the things that I did as mayor was I led on having a solid waste study done here at the city. Among the things that we've learned are these. We spend $23.74 per house per month on solid waste pickup and recycling pickup and and that is the third most expensive in the county. If you look at the 2020 numbers, you'll also see that you'll also see that we have the third worst recycling rate among suburban cities in Cuyahoga County. So we're spending a lot, and we're not getting a lot to show for it. That said, that said, I'm not looking to fine folks necessarily or charge more for certain people. But there is a more economical way of picking up. We certainly should be picking up loose recycling. And instead of bag recycling, we're charged a 50% premium for doing that. And of course, we can do this without laying off anybody, certainly no full-time employees at the City Service Department. And those people can be reassigned to do other work throughout the city that usually gets put off and outside contractors come in for. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Atkins.
This is not a simple question, even though it was meant to be in many ways. The sanitation department is going through a lot of changes. But let me say first, when I moved here, I was amazed that someone came and picked up my garbage from my backyard. What a wonderful thing. And as I walked through the neighborhood and campaigned, I talked to people about it. And, you know, this city was designed very beautifully. It was laid out so that the houses are up off the street, and the streets are the lowest part. And I can tell you that every one of them were telling me how much they enjoy the fact that the garbage is picked up that way. However, I know it's not the cheapest way to do it. And there are other ways to do it. There's another problem, though. The recycling no longer is being purchased by overseas in India and China, the biggest ones. And there's no market for it. And the market here is very nascent. So we have to figure out what to do with that. Instead of getting a benefit from the recycling, we're having to pay for it. So it has to be looked at in a lot of depth. And there's a lot more to say about this.
Thank you. And Ken Simmons.
Thank you. Yeah, this is something I've been interested in for a long time. I have an engineering degree, so I have some thoughts about it. And my family were in agricultural conservation work. And so the solid waste stream in the United States has just been neglected. One thing I think is important is for we, as a government, we need to inform the public about, you know, what works, what doesn't, what we find challenging, and work together to solve the problem. Because, like I said before, recycling, reduce, reuse, recycle is easy to say, but tremendously hard to do.
Thank you. For our next question, I'm going to combine several questions that we have received regarding the University Heights Building Department. There have been some comments in the community about the building department being in disarray. Can you comment on the status of the building department? And we're going to start with Philip Atkins.
I've had so much contact with the building department over the years. And they had a wonderful woman, Ruth Griswold, who was the kind of oversaw everything. And the past commissioner was a real good fellow. And they had good inspectors. Why it's gone, I don't know. I think that we need to have it back. We need people who know the community, know the mentality of the community, are there all the time, who can watch, see what's going on. It's great to be able to farm it out to some company who does it by the inspection. But you lose a lot. You lose the oversight. You lose the caring. It's their, the people that work here, it's their community. They're building something. They want to see everything done well. And they're willing to work with you. And you don't get that kind of feeling with an inspector who's coming from Mentor or some other place and is spending just a few minutes with you. So I would like to get that department back.
Thank you. Barbara Blankfeld.
I agree with Mr. Atkins. We had a tremendous building department. And since January of 19, by my count, 25 people have left the city. Just a few of those were retirements. And 12 of them were full-time employees in the building department. Safe-Built that we were forced to outsource to. Residents are finding it continually difficult, regardless of spin, to get the permits they need, to get someone to answer the phone. They have a contractor. They've saved the money. They want to do these improvements, or they wish to sell their house. And it is nothing but trouble. And I desperately want to bring the building department back in-house and have it fully staffed as it should be. People don't leave bad jobs. They leave bad situations. And we were told that by a number of people who left. So again, I agree with Mr. Atkins. I would like to see a return to an in-house building department where people get their results quickly.
Thank you. And Michael Dillon Brennan.
Yes, thank you. There is a shortage of building officials that are, have the full certifications that are needed to be a building commissioner in this state. After Mr. McReynolds retired, after Ruth Griswold retired and numerous other people retired from the building department, we did advertise for a new building commissioner. And we did not find the candidates that we were looking for. We simply did not find the applicants that were available. Part of that is a need for reform on the state level. That's something I've been working with my fellow mayors on. Back in the day, we had building commissioners who were grandfathered in with certain certifications. That's no longer the case. And in order to get the certifications you need, it takes years and years and years of experience. There's simply a shortage of qualified people to do this. We have brought in Safe-Built. They have come in since March 1st. And we've really turned around the department. The thing is, is it was a problem that came up while we had the pandemic. We had certain key retirements. We had difficulty filling some of the positions. And Safe-Built has taken it away, and they've done a fine job ever since. So we're happy to have them. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ken Simmons.
Thank you, Deanna. My first experience with the building department was when David Mann was there as a building official. And yeah, I agree. I thought that he did a fine job. He was very candid and straightforward. And he, you know, mentioned, these are the rules that I follow. However, I understand what Mayor Brennan is saying is, you know, I have a brother who's a building official for a county in southwest Ohio. And you have to have at least a registered architect. So that's a credential in addition to a degree. And I think what I'm thinking is that, you know, an opportunity for regionalism might be to, you know, have a combined...
Okay, thank you.
A combined county, local...
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we've had several questions describing an antagonistic environment between the mayor and council and among council members. If elected, how would you assure a respectful working environment for all elected officials and city staff? And we're going to start with Ken Simmons.
Thank you for the question. Well, so, you know, in theory, our government, whether it's local, state, or federal, we have a legislative branch that is supposed to be deliberative. And we have an executive branch that needs to carry out or enforce the laws that the legislative branch passes. To me, that does require a give and take and respectful dialogue among all the parties. And what we're really trying to do is we're trying to serve the public and not our own agendas. So, you know, if everybody has that in mind, then that's the way that I think you serve the public best.
Thank you. Philip Atkins.
The truth is, we have big issues to deal with. And we don't have a lot of time to be playing cat and mouse and games. It's just not adult. It's not professional. We have a lot more important things to do. And I think that when you're, it has to be clear between the mayor and the legislative staff that we don't need to argue about signs. We don't need to have to spend a whole council meeting arguing about a sign. This is something that if you're, you know, I'm a builder. And when we have to get something, I find the best that I can find. And we come up with a solution, and we move on. And some of these things, just they're not worth the debate of all these people. You have to rely on the leadership to be able to present something. And, you know, I'm happy to, my office will always be open. I mean, I'm always ready to talk to someone. I mean, everyone has a view, and you have to take it in because it helps solve the problem.
Thank you. Michael Dillon Brennan.
The Sillie season started early this year in University Heights. Thing is, is that we had a lot done here as administration. We got a lot done, especially the first two years. We had a change in vice mayor. We had a couple additional people on city council. And suddenly, things ground to a halt. We've had very little that's actually gotten done. And at the same time, I'm results-oriented. And there are a lot of things we've done administratively the last year and a half. We've gotten through the pandemic and so on. But what I see here is something very similar to what happened in Maple Heights two years ago, which is that Marinette Blackwell was very much like me, came from the private sector, led the community, loved what she was doing. The city council, not as much. And they ran their own candidate against the mayor. And when the mayor won reelection, council saw the writing on the wall and sat down and worked with the mayor once again. And the mayor and council get along once again, whereas for a while, they didn't. I view this as very much the same situation. I believe the same thing will happen here in University Heights. Thank you.
Barbara Blankfeld.
Thank you. This is one I am painfully aware of. Members of council and myself had supported Mr. Brennan previously. And within 18 months, that, as he's ground to a halt, we don't have action. We have ordinances that are considered and discussed and put into committee and passed for the benefit of the residents. And the law director confirms that this is a contract that is good. And then the mayor refuses to sign it. Or the mayor just lets it languish on his desk for months and months because he doesn't particularly agree with the decision that the legislative body made. And so things don't move forward, regardless of how hard we try. And that is something that is unacceptable. And it is of detriment to our neighbors who are waiting for those services. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, what are your views on the city's stance on rezoning properties for uses other than as a single-family residence? For example, rezone for the purpose of business, school, or religious uses. Would any of you seek to apply to rezone your home during your time in office? If so, please explain how this would not be a conflict of interest. And we'll start with Michael Dillon Brennan.
Thank you. Currently, we have U1 and U2 residential zoning, which is not mixed-use. And we've had a number of people in the community who have, if you will, tried to do things without obtaining the proper permits, without going through the appropriate processes to run businesses or establishments or houses of worship out of their home. And that is something that, as a community, we need to consider as part of a comprehensive rezoning process. I think that is something that should be a community decision. We can decide to preserve the residential character of our neighborhoods. We could also decide as a group that there are other things that we might like. We might like insurance offices and barber shops and bookstores and places of worship and cigar shops and any other number of businesses in our residential districts. Or we might prefer to leave our residential districts residential in character. But what we shouldn't do is just let a few people decide on their own without getting the proper permitting to force that issue and take the city to court as they've done. Thank you.
Philip Atkins.
Back when I was an urban planner, I wrote zoning ordinances. And the law is right there. It's not such, it's not rocket science. There's three things that has to happen. If you have a residential neighborhood and you have, it's all single-family homes. If you want to do something different, and it's an accepted use that can be added, it has to go through a process. You have to have the codes in the house properly done. You have to have the facilities that are required for that special use. And then you have to have a meeting with the neighborhood. Because those people invested in that neighborhood, that's their home. They live there. They see things, and they don't want to be harmed by it. So when you have a meeting, you discuss it. You see if it's viable. You see if it's not going to be a conflict. And that's how the decision is made. It's really not that difficult. There's been a lot of things that have gone on here at hand. Sometimes it can be done with just simple mediation. And I think the people in the, that have been involved are ready for that.
Thank you. Ken Simmons.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Brennan and candidate Atkins make a lot of good points. I can't say I disagree with really any of the points that they've made. I do support the effort to revise the zoning. It's the 21st century. Maybe, you know, these zoning laws should be updated, you know, to reflect current conditions. And, excuse me, and what was the point that you made? Well, yeah, mediation is going to be, I thought, I think, a lot more effective and efficient than litigation.
Thank you. Barbara Blankfeld.
I'm delighted to see so many people at this table that believe in mediation. And as tiny a community as we are, to have conversation and to have bridge-building and to come to understanding in a way that we'll also dovetail with our laws is ideal. We very much want to have comprehensive zoning review. This was discussed. Ordinance was drafted. Contract was drawn up. And we want to get started. Since some of this zoning review has not been done since the '40s or '50s, it needs to be brought into the 21st century and meet the needs of those who live here. But that effort is currently being thwarted. As of the last council meeting, Mr. Brennan had said that he would not move that contract forward because of the litigation. He's holding it in abeyance and not allowing our zoning to begin. And that will be at least an 18-month process to do that efficiently and effectively and get us forward. So there's that.
You have 30 seconds.
The pricing that we have for zoning is good until May of next year. There is litigation pending, and there are proper litigation reasons for waiting. And the councilwoman knows this. So this is something that, you know, we as a city are looking at. We are looking in the long view to update our '40s and '50s-era code. And at the same time, we have an obligation to enforce the laws that we have now here in city. And we have folks in city government who want the city to look the other way and not enforce the law. I'm here, I take my oath of office very seriously. And I am enforcing the law in the city, including the current zoning code. Thank you.
Mr. Atkins, 30 seconds.
Yes, just to add, if, you know, if I am lucky enough to get the exalted position of the mayor, having had my experience helping at the review of the... I said, if I get the exalted experience of being the mayor, then I will gladly review the zoning ordinance and see how much of it really needs to be changed and reviewed. But I think the whole key is just following what you have now and getting it done and being mindful of all the possibilities to mediate.
Our next question. Our next question. In 2020, the nation saw a rise in crime. Living in University Heights, we have noticed an increase in burglaries, car thefts, and assaults. How do you see the University Heights Police Department changing, if at all, over the next several years? And we'll start with Ken Simmons.
Thank you, Deanna. Yeah, so this is an unprecedented time in the last, what, since the 1990s, I think. We've had an increase in, in the rates of violent crime. Property crimes are always high, but violent crime is on the rise. And, you know, for whatever reason, and, and we still don't know as a society how, how we reduce crime. We've tried overpolicing, we've tried rehabilitation strategies in, in prisons, and these things just don't seem to work. But with the police department in University Heights, they have a very narrow walk. You know, they have to follow the laws, they have to, of course, you know, use restraint with, you know, how they, or the aggressiveness that they use to enforce the law. But I think they are prepared to continue.
Thank you. Phil Atkins?
This is also a very interesting question because, first of all, I've had some experience with the University Heights Police going back. I've been, like I said, I've been here 30 years and raised kids here. And I have never seen a department that is more in tune with the people that live here and is kind to them and understand, I really, I, I, I take my hat off to them. They're, they're, they've done a tremendous job. And as I, as I walk the neighborhood, I'm finding out that some areas on the, on the west side of Warrensville are having problems. But it's the same difficulties that I mentioned before. We're losing residences. I mean, we're, we're losing homeowners. We're, we're, we're getting renters, we're getting, the homeowner who's invested in a property looks out for it and is watches things in the neighborhood. And they're the ones that contact police. You can't have police everywhere and you can't have some kind of device watching everything. You have to get input from the people who live there. And the people who live there see everything. And that's how you get to solve these problems.
Thank you. Barbara Blankfield?
Thank you. We do have a remarkable police department. Our chief and officers are good neighbors to our residents and are incredibly responsive. The key, and, and both the police and fire chief have been asking for this to happen, I'll make it a priority, is that they want more community involvement. All of us see that somebody hears something and instead of saying something to the police department, it goes on Facebook or it goes on Nextdoor. So, community responsive training, emergency responsive training and neighborhood watches, developing an even stronger partnership on, on the good base that it has now will be essential to helping our police department really do its best job.
And Michael Dillon Brennan?
Thank you, Deanna. I have to reject part of the premise of the question itself. If you look at the annual report of the University Heights Police Department, you'll see that some crimes are up and some crimes are actually down. I do support the continued investment in our police department, the continued training that we've been doing with our officers. I support continued equipment, new equipment for the, for the police department. We opened the Office of Community Policing under my administration with Chief Rogers. We had the first University Heights observance of the National Night Out. All these things are to help build community and to help build community trust and relations between the police department and the residents here in the community. It, it helps to foster the idea that the residents can trust the police and know that they can work with the police. We've even had coffee with a cop, several of these before the pandemic, none since. But it's a program we look to start up again where people can sit down with police officers over a cup of coffee and learn more about what the department does more, get to know our police officers and not have them just be a nameless person with a badge. Thank you.
Okay, and now we will have our closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. And we're going to go in reverse order, so we will begin with Philip Atkins.
The residents of this city are the ones who invested in this city. Their needs come first. They're being burdened by the taxes and the fact that they can't rely on the school system. And we need to do something about it. And these problems are not, not that they can't be resolved. If we address them, we'll get to see what the problems are, you see the difficulties and from difficulties are opportunities to do something really grand. This city is a beautiful, beautiful planned city. One mile square, a city hall right in the center, emergency services right in the center. Everything is two minutes away from emergency service. We can solve our problems. We don't have to, we don't have to ignore them. And once we get the load of this tax burden off everyone, you're going to see that everything is coming back. And if we can get some schools that the, that people want to go to, that will really, really rebuild the city.
Thank you. Michael Dillon Brennan?
Yes, thank you. Consider tonight to be a job interview for the highest profile job in our city. The residents of University Heights are the hiring committee. With your vote, you may hire the next mayor of the city. I have the professional qualifications, over 20 years of courtroom advocacy, a lifetime of community advocacy, together with my record of growth and accomplishment as your mayor over these last four years. University Heights has always been a great place to live. We helped it find its identity and rebuild a sense of community even through the pandemic. We've made real progress on all fronts, some of which we touched on tonight. I am proud of my record and we will build on it. We've only just begun. You can learn more at BrennanForUH.com. That's Brennan number four U H dot com. And you can follow me on Facebook and Instagram. You can reach out and ask me any further questions you have. I thank you for your consideration. I humbly ask for your vote. And please, please watch the council forum next because we not only need a good mayor, we need good members of council. Thank you.
Ken Simmons?
Thank you, Deanna. Well, my administration, if you elect me, it would be my honor to focus on these issues. Customer service, you know, I want to look at external stakeholders. And that's residents, intergovernmental relations, want to increase transparency and remove barriers to participation in government and increase the responsiveness of city staff. Internal stakeholders, I want to see if there are synergies that we can see between, or develop between the different departments. Fiscal stewardship, balanced budget. I would like to see a charter review and, or at least discuss the necessity for it. And we should examine the merger of our school district with one of the other neighboring school districts. Thank you for your time and I would appreciate your vote on November 2nd.
Barbara Blankfield?
Thank you very much. We are an amazing community already. We already have tremendous department directors that I'm fortunate enough to work with all the time. We need to be celebrating our diversity. We need to be bridge building. We need to be managing our tax dollars as carefully as we can and really being mindful of which decisions to spend are something non-essential or something we absolutely must have presently. But the schools are another entity that require attention. But it's what we do here in University Heights as a city that we have to put our main focus on. And we have to do it collaboratively and we have to do it cooperatively and with respect and with integrity and ethics. I want to see us put on the map for being a tight-knit community that celebrates its diversity of its neighbors while we take the very best care of them as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our candidates forum for University Heights mayor. We will resume in just a few minutes with the candidates for city council. All right. Nice to meet you. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
But before we do that, let's review the rules. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and one minute for a closing statement after a question and answer period. Time limits will be enforced, and you can look for the time limit information in front here. Only written questions will be accepted. If you'd like to submit a question for the candidates during the live forum, please send it via email to heights@lwvgreatercleveland.org. The email box is being monitored. League screeners will review submitted questions, not to block opinions or skew information, but in order to avoid duplication, provide a diversity of questions, and ensure readability and appropriateness. There are seven candidates who are running for three seats. Council members serve a four-year term and are paid $9,100. There are two candidates who are not here today, and I will read statements from each of them. The order of speaking then has been determined by drawing lots and will be reversed for the closing statements. So first off, I'm going to read statements from the candidates who are not here. And our first candidate is Danny Grand. "To all fellow University Heights community members, and yes, I mean all of you, I would like to take this time to thank you for participation in this evening's event. And since we are on the topic of politics, I think it is important to examine the etymology of the word. Poly is from the Greek word meaning many and ticks, as in a bunch of blood-sucking insects." Hope that one went over well. Now with that out of the way, on a more serious note, I want to start by saying something we should all realize and remember. There is but one race, the human race, and we are all part of it. We stand here today, not as allies and foes, not as political rivals, but as good-hearted Americans who care about their country and care about their city. So I commend all the people who are here today in support of such a great and noble cause. You see, too often in politics, especially these days, you find division. But that is not the American way, far from it. Each one of us is a candle that shines much brighter than the size of its flame, and when united, we can light the way forward. The more unity, the more brighter that light becomes. But for some reason, the world around us is desperately trying to snuff out our lights. Resistance in this battle is one of words, and to unravel hatred and a larger, stronger overpowering of love, respect, and of kindness. Americanism involves being one nation under God, indivisible, and it is our duty to accomplish that. We are here today to talk a little bit about who we are and what we want to bring to the table as elected members of the city's council. I can do that in a very succinct manner. I want to first start off by saying that I am self-funding my campaign, and that if I'm elected, I am donating my entire salary to local charitable organizations, because this isn't about me, this is about University Heights. My platform revolves around investing in University Heights. I want to see us as a premier city, upping the ante and doing whatever it takes to get the city revenues to go up while protecting our schools, protecting our streets. Safety is a big priority, protecting our city personnel, including our police and firemen who do an amazing job, maximizing benefits for citizens, exploring the opportunities, fostering equality among all community members, strengthening the administration by being sports and working hard at working together. But I think most important of all is to give back to the people, bolster our local economy by lowering taxes, putting money back into the pockets of the people, somehow, some way, but by any means necessary. And to all those who say to me, "But Danny, how are you going to do that?", I say the question should not be "how", but "when", and the answer to that question is "now". It's time for a change, a positive change for the better, one that lifts all of us up together as one united, as proud Americans, and as proud citizens of University Heights, a place I've become proud to call my home. One last thing, I want you to contact me directly. I want you to hear from you all and work on all your behalves. Please go to grandforcouncil.com. That's grandf-o-r-council.com. You can click the email icon at the bottom of the page. I am not taking any money, but anyone who wants to stand with me to spread our message of working hard at working together to make our city the best it's ever been, feel free to come along for a ride unlike any other. If this makes sense to you, then please vote for me, Danny Grand, this November. Thank you, God bless, and good night to you all. Thank you. I'm next going to read a statement by Sherri R. Sacks. "Good evening. My name is Sherri Sacks, and I'm running for University Heights City Council. Since I cannot be here in person, I want to thank the Cleveland Heights, University Heights Chapter of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland for presenting this statement on my behalf. I have made University Heights my home for the last 29 years, raising a blended family of six now adult children. It has become enlightening to attend city council meetings and an honor to have been invited by Councilwoman Sandra Berry to serve on the Citizens Committee on Policing Policies. I am running for city council because I have the skills, experience, and innovative ideas to be an effective councilperson. I have executive experience in program development and implementation, personnel management and fiscal operations at top local nonprofits, including Judson and Montefiore Senior Retirement Communities, the Children's Hunger Alliance, and currently at the Jewish Family Service Association. My exemplary work and volunteerism have resulted in recognition as Montefiore's Employee of the Year, Jewish Family Service Association's William Wartzman Professional Achievement Award, and as a 2020 University Heights Citizen of the Year Award. Since announcing my candidacy to run for city council, I have committed to introducing myself to you, the residents of University Heights. I have approached many homes and have spoken to hundreds of you, asking for your ideas, opinions, and concerns to improve our city services. You have spoken, and I have heard you. The most common concerns you have expressed throughout the city include maintaining property values by supporting stakeholder teams to work with landlords and renters, and supporting our elder citizens who have been loyal taxpayers for decades, working to collaborate with city officials and other stakeholders to improve communication and project implementation, promoting regional collaboration to reduce duplicative costs while delivering high-quality services. Other initiatives I plan to take on include upgrading and maintaining our streets, delivering the municipal survey regarding sanitation services, implementing high-quality programming for seniors, refining the procedure for designating public establishments, including houses of prayer. My plans to address these and other concerns may be found on my website at www.friendsofsherrixsacks.com. If what I shared tonight resonates with you, please vote Sherri R. Sacks to represent you on University Heights City Council. Thank you for listening tonight. Thank you for talking to me this summer, and thank you for your support." Okay. And now, we will hear from the candidates who are present this evening. And first, we are going to hear from Brian J. King.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank our hosts tonight, the League of Women Voters, Future Heights, and the Heights Libraries. I'm proud to be a member of all three of these wonderful organizations. I would also like to thank the audience members for participating this evening. I've had an opportunity to meet with many of you, whether that was at the parade, the block parties, concerts, I was volunteering with the Friends of the Walt, or perhaps on your doorstep. Your stories have informed my priorities as a candidate, and let me outline those briefly. My first priority is to make sure that any redevelopment of our limited land resources is done thoughtfully. First that comes to mind is University Square. We have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to revitalize that corner of University Heights, and we cannot fail. Second, I would use my 20-plus years of IT experience to help modernize city systems and make it easier to report issues like a pothole or something like that, to get updates on when you might have that done, or the status of a building permit. Last but not least, I've heard an outpouring of support for local environmental action. We cannot wait for just the state or federal governments to intervene. I would look at things like building regulations, zoning codes, and adoption of alternative energy. Thank you for listening tonight, and I look forward to questions from the audience.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Christopher Cooney.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Cooney. I'm excited to be part of this great event. Thank you to our hosts for having us. I've learned a lot over the last several months, talking to a lot of different residents throughout the city, and it's great to be able to get some questions throughout the day, too. My wife, Alicia, and I moved to University Heights in 2003, and we've been a member of Jay-Z Parish since 2002. Currently, we have two boys at Jay-Z, they're in seventh and eighth grade. My family and I have enjoyed University Heights with its close-knit family neighborhoods, convenient access to nearby business districts, and strong school systems. As a successful small-business owner, I've developed a wide range of skills and my experiences that I could bring to this position. The interactions with my clients have me review the opportunities, consider both risks and rewards, make informed decisions that can ultimately benefit the organization. My thought process is plan, do, check, act. Essentially, that's the same process that I would bring to city council for University Heights. I have over 25 years' experience in manufacturing, which has been used in multiple departments over several states for reviewing information and maintaining budgets. I've come to appreciate that communication and planning are keys for success. It is also important to have open interactions and work together as a team. I understand the diversity of this community and will strive to maintain a city that is welcoming and inclusive to all. The multicultural aspect of the city is one of our strengths and should be embraced as a significant asset. At this time, I see a tremendous opportunity for the city to preserve the residential nature of our community while promoting opportunities for businesses in designated areas. The opportunities that are existing right now, including those at Cedar and Warrensville, to be able to expand and have that area thrive, would be critical for our city moving forward. And I'm also available on my website, cooneyforcouncil.com, and also my Facebook page, Christopher Cooney for University Heights City Council.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Paul Miller.
Good evening. I want to first to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event. My name's Paul Miller, and I'd like to tell you a little about myself. I've lived in University Heights with my family for 43 years and enjoy the diversity of our neighborhoods. I have a degree in communications and a doctor of jurisprudence. After graduating, I chose a different path, working in the business world. First, working for Westinghouse Broadcasting in Boston, and eventually relocating to Cleveland, where I served as vice president of training at Kaihoga Savings. After leaving the bank due to their merger, I continued in the field of sales and sales training. During my career, I have trained hundreds of professionals in sales, public speaking, and management. Post-retirement, I have been a substitute teacher at a high school presently. I sit on the board of Temple Israel near Temeet and currently head the Security Committee, working on ways to guarantee the safety of our congregants. I also serve on the Executive Committee of the JCC Men's Club. In 2008, I was appointed by former mayor Beryl Rothschild to sit on the Charter Review Commission. I found this experience to be most rewarding. Working on the committee to update the charter for our city is something I'm very proud of. Fast forward to 2021, and I feel a review of the charter is important with regards to making the charter gender-neutral. This past year, I sat on the Citizens Committee of Policing Policies and was given the Citizen of the Year Award by the mayor. I am very proud to have been endorsed by Councilman Phil Earl and Vice Mayor Michelle Weiss.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Winifred Weiser.
I'm Winifred Weiser. I bring a wealth of experience and training to this race. I've been involved with the city since 1995 on a volunteer basis. I currently serve as the resident representative to the University Heights Community Improvement Corporation and am a 10-year-plus member of the Finance Advisory Committee that works with Council's Finance Committee. I've served on a number of other resident communities as well. I spent 25 years in management in private industry before I moved on to my current career. I hold a master's degree in public administration with a concentration in public works management. My management experience plus my formal training gives me a unique background to apply as a council member representing you, the resident. I have a deep understanding of the challenges that the city will face as it moves into the next decade. Old answers will need to be updated, and new technology can give us cost-effective ways to increase safety and security. Applying these will take a mayor and council who work together, compromise when necessary, but always remember, we're working for you, the resident, improving the city for all of us. Our city is diverse, and the approach to any problem needs to reflect that diversity. It is up to the council and mayor to both listen and remain open to the resolutions that will meet the need of our community. We have many new, diverse residents. Perhaps it is time to bring back the "series of discoveries" program to help us better understand one another. I look forward to meeting you as I continue walking the city and to tonight, answering the thoughtful, and I hope, tough questions you may have for us.
Thank you. We will next hear from Katie Nelson-Moody.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Nelson-Moody. My pronouns are she, her, hers. And if you'd like more information about my campaign, please visit moody4uh.com or Katie Nelson-Moody for University Heights on Facebook. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Library for facilitating and hosting tonight's panel. We all appreciate the work that you're doing. The late Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg said, "I'm a very strong believer in listening and learning from others. As a mental health therapist by profession, I am well-equipped to do just that. I've experienced walking alongside and empowering youth and families through some of their most difficult times by focusing on strengths and working to overcome barriers. As a newer resident in University Heights, I have become increasingly fond of our city, and I hope to inspire other young residents and their families to pursue their passions and engage in local government. The pillars of my campaign are relationship, advocacy, and understanding. If elected, I will work to build relationships through seeking understanding, keeping in mind that we all want to see University Heights grow as a safe and inclusive community. I will advocate for the amplification of voices that have been historically ignored or marginalized. Lastly, I will seek proactive systemic change to ensure that University Heights is truly home for all residents. Thank you."
Okay, thank you. And now, we're going to move into our Q and A period, and I want to remind the candidates to please stay within the allotted time of one minute for each response. If there is a question directed at one particular candidate, the other candidates will have the opportunity to also respond for 30 seconds. So I'm going to start off with a very important question regarding garbage. "What do you think is the ideal garbage collection system for University Heights? Are you in favor of levying fines against residents who leave trash on their lawns or charging larger households higher fees for garbage collection? Would getting rid of backyard trash pick up lower our taxes?" So we're going to start with Brian King for this question on garbage.
Well, way to start off with the trash talk there. There's a lot to unpack in that question. I'm just going to talk about the main things I've been considering when looking at changing our trash programs. Number one, I would not support outsourcing of our trash or laying off any of our service workers. That's my number-one red line. Number two, I would make sure that there was support for our elders, physically disabled, or people with very steep driveways. I'm talking to you, Edgerton. And then, number three, we need to have well-defined tangible benefits of why we were switching away from our current program. Those were in thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Winifred Weiser.
Well, it's probably the question that has been rolling around University Heights for years, backyard, front yard, and it's never wholly been resolved. I do wish that the survey would have gone out to finally get a sense of what the residents want. A lot of residents see backyard as an amenity. The savings that have been stated as coming from eliminating backyard are not wholly what they would be because it doesn't include the elimination of full-time staff. So there are some questions regarding that. The reality is that backyard is seen as an amenity. It initially came in because it keeps trash off front lawns, and if it's an amenity, I think that needs to be a resident decision. And we need to find out what that answer is, because no matter which side of the problem you're on or what you anticipate, I think that you may be surprised at the answer.
Thank you. Katie Nelson-Moody.
Thank you. So before running for University Heights City Council, I was one of the facilitators or moderators for the University Heights Discussion Board, and I know that a frequent topic is the garbage and recycling program. The biggest concerns, as have been stated by Brian and Winn, are the safety and mobility issues of how do we get our recycling from our backyards to the curb, but also the concern about waste. You know, it's disconcerting to put our recycling in a plastic bag to know that that bag is going to be ripped open and disposed of. So I think that there's some middle ground here. One option that, you know, has been discussed is loose recycling in the backyard. That could be a step in the right direction. But I agree with Winn that this needs to be a decision that the residents are part of making. So that's what I would support, as, you know, as more information from the residents as far as what they would like to see changed. As far as the taxes, you know, the amounts that we pay there, you know, some of that depends on what changes are made. Thank you.
Paul Miller.
I once said to a resident, and they asked me the question, "What about our garbage? What about the pickup? What do you think?" And I once said to them, "Over my dead body, will we change it?" I've lived here for 43 years. I have gotten to know those guys, happens to be guys, I've never seen a woman, and I'm not sure why, but there are a number of guys that I've spoken to. The garbage is done, it's done efficiently, it is done on time, there is nothing that I would change. That's number one. Number two is, if you're going to change it and you want to get a survey, I've spoken to about 100 to 150 people, and most of those people have said, "Don't change it." That's number two. Number three is, I would really like to know how much money you are actually going to save. You're also talking about a service department which is unionized, which is a very strong union. Don't change it.
Thank you. Christopher Cooney.
Yeah, so that obviously has been a hot topic for all of us as we've gone out and talked to other residents. One of the things we do need to do is we have to dive into the details for the study, the cost savings that could be there. Are the numbers correct as we take that deep dive? The other one is the residents that are opposed to it, don't want to keep the service as is, they do look at it as a perk. So if this is something that the majority of the residents would like to keep, and it is a perk, it is something that they do benefit from, then that's something that should be strongly considered. The other one is, if there were to be done, then I would not be in favor of any reduction of personnel. We have a good staff, it's a good crew, they should be kept, you know, with the city. As we know, if somebody's trying to hire, you don't want to lose good people. The last thing is, if they were to change to an automated service, what And then number three, we need to have well-defined tangible benefits of why we were switching away from our current program. Those are, those were in thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Winifred Weiser.
Well, it's probably the question that has been rolling around University Heights for years. Backyard, front yard. And it's never wholly been resolved. I do wish that the survey would have gone out to finally get a sense of what the residents want. A lot of residents see backyard as an amenity. The savings that have been stated as coming from eliminating backyard are not wholly what they would be because it doesn't include the elimination of full-time staff. So there are some questions regarding that. The reality is that backyard is seen as an amenity. It initially came in because it keeps trash off front lawns. And if it's an amenity, I think that needs to be a resident decision. And we need to find out what that answer is because no matter which side of the problem you're on or what you anticipate, I think that you may be surprised at the answer.
Thank you. Katie Nelson Moody.
Thank you. So before running for University Heights City Council, I was one of the facilitators or moderators for the University Heights Discussion Board. And I know that a frequent topic is the garbage and recycling program. The biggest concerns, as have been stated by Brian and Winn, are the safety and mobility issues of how do we get our recycling from our backyards to the curb? But also the concern about waste. You know, it's, it's disconcerting to put our recycling in a plastic bag to know that that bag is going to be ripped open and disposed of. So I think that there's some middle ground here. One option that, you know, has been discussed is loose recycling in the backyard. That could be a step in the right direction. But I agree with Winn that this needs to be a decision that the residents are part of, part of making. So that's what I would support as, you know, as more information from the residents as far as what they would like to see changed. As far as the taxes, you know, the, the amounts that we pay there, you know, some of that depends on what changes are made. Thank you.
Paul Miller.
I once said to a resident, and they asked me the question, "What about our garbage? What about the pickup? What do you think?" And I once said to them, "Over my dead body, will we change it?" I've lived here for 43 years. I have gotten to know those guys, happens to be guys, I've never seen a woman, and I'm not sure why, but there are a number of guys that I've spoken to. The garbage is done, it's done efficiently, it is done on time. There is nothing that I would change. That's number one. Number two is, if you're going to change it and you want to get a survey, I've spoken to about 100 to 150 people and most of those people have said, "Don't change it." That's number two. Number three is, I would really like to know how much money you are actually going to save. You're also talking about a service department which is unionized, which is a very strong union. Don't change it.
Thank you. Christopher Cooney.
Yeah, so that obviously has been a hot topic for all of us as we've gone out and talked to other residents. One of the things we do need to do is we have to dive into the details for the study. The cost savings that could be there, are they, are the numbers correct as we take that deep dive? The other one is the residents that are opposed to it, don't want to keep the service as is, they do look at it as a perk. So if this is something that the majority of the residents would like to keep, and it is a perk, it is something that they do benefit from, then that's something that should be strongly considered. The other one is the, if they were to be done, then I would not be in favor of any reduction of personnel. We have a good staff, it's a good crew, they should be kept, you know, with the city. As we know, if somebody's trying to hire, you don't want to lose good people. The other, the last thing is the, if it were, if they were to change to an automated service, what's the advantage? It can't just be about dollars and cents. The residents need to get something that's tangible, that they could be proud of for moving something from the backyard to the front yard.
Thank you. Okay. We've had several questions or comments about this next topic, which is describing an antagonistic environment between the mayor and council and among council members. If elected, how would you assure a respectful working environment for all elected officials and city staff? And we're going to start with Winifred Weiser.
The joy of starting that topic. Bluntly put, both sides have to be willing to compromise. Some of the problems that have arisen have been because council, council has the power of the purse. One of council's responsibilities is making sure that we operate with a balanced budget. And sometimes we have mayors that would like to spend extra. And when we get into that extra spending, if we do have funds, then there can be tension. So both sides have to be willing to give a little. I think being civil to one another, answering questions, responding. If council has a question about something, the mayor needs to respond. And council needs to respond when the mayor has a question. Some of what's happened is, is gotten baked in, and I am terribly sorry to see it.
Thank you. Paul Miller.
I would do a couple of things. First of all, we suffer. When I say we, every single resident in the city suffers because unless mayor and the council work together, we will not ever reach our potential. That's number one. Number two is, I would suggest we have an off-site meeting. That the council and the mayor go to a secluded place and talk about it. And if they need a facilitator, a very good friend of mine who has his PhD and teaches at the business school at Case Western, I am sure I could get him and he would charge zero. He's done this entire business career. It's worthwhile, we should work towards that. And somebody has to say to both parties, "Listen, you respond to us, the residents. You do not respond in an inappropriate manner between each other." Thank you.
Thank you. Brian King.
Yes, the, the relationship between the administration and, and council has, has been admittedly a distraction from, from the good order of, of the city. For, for my part, if, if I'm elected, I'm willing to work with, with anyone, anyone who's elected as mayor, anyone else who sits on council. I've, you know, made connections with, with all of the people at the table here. I've reached out to members of current, current council. And I'm willing to bridge any gap that there is there. Thank you.
Katie Nelson Moody.
Thank you. So yeah, definitely a hot topic. I'm, I'm not surprised that someone asked a question and thankful that they did. You know, anytime that you have a group of people who are very passionate about something, there's going to be tension because we're all going to have different ways of how to handle various situations. And I think that's the core of what's going on here between... As a therapist, I work with families and I work with systems. So whether that's, you know, three generations in one family, children and family services, courts, schools, we all work together for a common goal. And I've been able to facilitate that in my role as a therapist. And I'd hope to do the same thing, but on a different scale here by, you know, seeking to understand where everyone is coming from and really learning to, to respect that and see how we can all have our needs met even when they initially seem to, to differ.
Thank you. Christopher Cooney.
Yeah, the, obviously the relationship between council and the mayor is starting to become more well-known, more documented. I think at the end of the day, the mayor and the council at their core have a, a common goal, is that they are here for the residents of University Heights. And that's why they sought to be elected. And that's why they're in the positions that they are in. So with that, the differences between them as to what they want to accomplish as a whole are probably not that difficult. There is, just be some disagreements as to how they want to get there. I think if all parties were to take a step back, stay focused on the plan that they're trying to put in place, keep in mind the residents that it does affect, they can move forward on a lot of these issues. But at the same time, they have to remember to not let any of these issues become personal and to keep the residents for University Heights in mind so that everybody can benefit from the decisions that they're trying to make because they wanted to get elected and they did seek what was best for the city at that time.
Okay. Our next question. What are your views on the city's stance on rezoning properties for uses other than as a single-family residence? For example, rezoned for the purpose of business, school, or religious uses. Would any of you seek to apply to rezone your home during your time in office? If so, please explain how this would not be a conflict of interest. And we'll start with Brian King.
When it comes to rezoning properties within University Heights, I would be in favor of be able to change zoning on our main thoroughfares, Warrensville, Cedar Road, Green. As far as personally, I, I would not seek to change the zoning of my house. You know, many of our, our neighborhoods have been single-family homes for, for generations. And people have moved in there with, with the expectations of them remaining as single-family homes. You know, there might be an exception here and there, but I believe in maintaining the, the current character of the city. Thank you.
Christopher Cooney.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of rezoning or spot zoning, single-family homes that are in a residential district into a business under the U2 code within the city. The city planners, if you look at the code, had a vision that kept the, the business districts on the main arteries. Those are Cedar, Warrensville, Green Road, Framat Boulevard. And the vision was that they have families in the center with business districts along the outskirts. And the reason for that, you look at frontage, you look at parking, you look at accessibility. If you were to change the codes and to allow for these spot zoning variances in family districts, the traffic is, would be considerable potentially, could create safe roadways. And essentially, one of the attractions for University Heights is that it is a family-oriented suburb, family-oriented city. And that's what should be thought of, and that's, that's why it should remain. We should not do zoning.
Katie Nelson Moody.
Thank you. While I'm not opposed to rezoning in general, I think it's a, a very complicated topic. Right now, the, the process for zoning, it's, you know, it's complicated. It's difficult for someone like me who doesn't, you know, I don't, I don't know zoning, I don't know government. So that's something I need to learn about. And I think that a lot of residents in the area feel the same way, that we're not quite sure what that would mean for our neighborhoods. So I think it would be wonderful to have some forums about what that would look like, what it would look like for residents as far as parking, what it would mean as far as access for certain members of our community. Because I think that's a big factor here is having accessible places of worship and other things. Excuse me. So I'd like it to go to the residents and the neighbors of people looking to change zoning. I'm not planning to rezone my home at any time, but I'd, you know, I'd like to see how the council can support meeting the needs of people who are looking to rezone for various reasons.
Okay, thank you. Paul Miller.
Number one is, I'm not rezoning my house. Okay? I've lived here for 43 years, it's a one-family house, I live on Johnny Road, 2370, it stays the same. That's number one. Number two, let's talk about rezoning. It is a complicated, complicated subject matter. And by the way, we are not unique. We may think we're unique, we all think we live in a bubble. There's 13,900-plus people who live in this city of ours, but you can go across the country and you could find lots of problems in regards to zoning. Number one is, I think we should, we need a thorough examination of our zoning laws at the present moment. Number two is, if we're having problems and we seem to be having problems, religious problems, then it would seem to me what we do is, we take a look at other cities across the country and see how they're handling the situation. We need to start now and not later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next question. Do you... I'm sorry. Winifred Weiser, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Feeding ahead.
A lot of people wouldn't want to touch it. Bluntly put, our zoning codes have been out of date for years. We had an issue with McDonald's where we had the parking zone. Nobody has parking zones. Mayor Infeld actually started an initiative and led a contract to get our codes updated. Unfortunately, the guy died before they were done. The current council has approved a contract for an updating of the zoning codes. That contract is sitting on the mayor's desk. It's now hung up because of the legal issues. Paul has hit a lot of the nail on the head. Quite bluntly, the city has had some changes. And we're going to have to look at some things. And if we don't, the law may get changed in the courts because of court findings. So there are things we really need to start looking at. And as far as rezoning my house, well, we rezoned up to two houses close to my house because I lived in the Cedar Taylor area when we did the shopping center.
Thank you. Now, moving on to our next question. Do you think that council members should have a role as an advocate on the impact of state policies on the CHUH School District and other schools in University Heights? We're going to start with Brian King.
That's a, that's a tough question. So I believe that state policy is, is hampering our school district quite a bit and has been for, for decades. In, in the 1970s, there were laws changed that, that fixed the millage on, on the property, on the cost of houses or on the taxes when they go, it fixed it to a specific dollar amount when it's passed. So there was a levy passed in 1920, in 2020, and that dollar amount, you know, we're about to see our housing values go up, that dollar amount will be fixed to the 19, or the 2020 level of the pricing. You know, that doesn't account for inflation.
Thank you. Winifred Weiser.
I have to answer as a taxpayer because even if we sit on council, we're taxpayers. Number one, a good school system is critical to keeping our families, especially the young families that have moved here, in University Heights and helping the city grow. By the same token, we also need to take responsibility. And yes, the D-Rolf decision has not been implemented the way it should have been. We are still trying to fight for our cut and for the state to actually resolve the issue. It's in the state constitution, and hopefully we'll get there. So yes, we do need to advocate the legislature, but until the legislature as a whole changes, it's going to continue to be a back and forth. But we need to take an interest in our school system. We need to be able to articulate what we want. And we need to be able to demand that the school system really produce good results.
Thank you. Katie Nelson Moody.
Thank you. Would you mind repeating the question, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you think that council members should have a role as advocate on the impact of state policies on the CHUH School District and other schools in University Heights?
It's a, it's definitely a tough question and a good one. You know, I think part of our role on council is to partner with the school board. So I think that, that's our biggest role there is to work together with the school board, as that is their, their area of expertise more than ours. But, you know, absolutely, I mean, we, part of our job is to advocate for our community and that includes with education and listening, again, listening to what, what they want, listening to what they need. So I do think that there's a role there, but also with respect for the, the school board and recognizing their knowledge in that area.
Thank you. Christopher Cooney.
Yes, I would agree that we should have a role in regards to what the state, the school district, the city council. Since you could say we have our boots on the ground, we're receiving input directly from the citizens. And as long as we, we get that information, we get the feedback, we should be able to sort of flow that information up to the state level. We also should look at for the funding is, it's not necessarily, it may not necessarily be a revenue problem. Raising taxes doesn't simply fix any issues that may be coming up. We get the information from the citizens, we can put that up to the state, and therefore any financial decisions that need to be made can be more informed. I would look at the state level overall, what's the plan for that? What, where do, where are you and where do you want to go? What's your strategic direction for that? And if we could provide as a conduit between the citizens and the state, that should be a resource that should be tapped into.
Thank you. Paul Miller.
I pledge to you that I will attend every school board meeting. As a taxpayer, I think all of us should attend every school board meeting. When it comes to the state, it is not a simple matter. Because once you take on the mantle of an elected official, then are you representing yourself or are you representing the individual in this city, University Heights? I would make it very clear that at the time that I would, and I think all of us have a high stake in this in regards to vouchers and regards to how our tax money is spent. So I am suggesting every single person who is listening to me now, right now, take a valid interest and a concerted interest and talk to your representatives and talk to the governor about the current situation, especially when it involves vouchers.
Thank you. This concludes our Q and A portion of the program. And so now we're going to have each candidate give a one-minute closing statement. And we're going to go in reverse order. So that would mean that Katie Nelson Moody is our first speaker.
I want to say thank you to everyone here in this room, from our moderators to everyone recording, keeping track of time, and also to my neighbors here at this table. I'd be honored to partner with any of you on city council if elected. I'd also like to say thank you to the neighbors and friends watching the live stream or the recording. Your time is important, and I know that all of us appreciate the investment that you're making with your time to learn more about each of us. We appreciate your support and the work that you've done in putting questions into all of this. I'd like to, again, quote Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She said, "Fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you." I ask you all to join me in working together for University Heights by voting for me, Katie Nelson Moody, on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Winifred Weiser.
I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity to talk to you tonight. I know the amount of work that goes into preparing something like I know the amount of work that goes into preparing something like this debate, and I'm grateful that the League took this on. I'm also grateful that I personally have had the opportunity to respond to some of the questions that you, the voter, had. This election is an important one for the city. Your vote counts for the direction and tone we will have going forward over the next two years. Thank you for listening, and more importantly, thank you for voting. And my website is win4uh.com for more information. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Paul Miller.
Thank you for having us. With regards to the issues facing the city, these are my priorities, which I will work towards. I believe in a strong collaboration between the mayor and city council. I believe in a comprehensive review of our zoning regulations. I believe in the continuation of our backyard trash pickup. I believe in a balanced budget and a rainy day fund. I believe we should move quickly to resolve the economic development of University Square. I believe that all calls to city halls should be returned within 24 hours. I believe in creating an energy-efficient city. I believe in creating more bike lanes, and I believe strongly that our city needs more senior citizen programs. I want every city, I want every citizen to take pride in University Heights. My passion is to make our city the best it can possibly be. My purpose is to work towards that goal. I am very proud to have been endorsed by Councilman Phil Erdl and Vice Mayor Michelle Weiss.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear from Brian King. And you will be last, yes. I'm sorry. Yeah, so number four is Christopher Cooney? Yes, okay, sorry. Sorry, I got a little ahead of myself, yet again.
We somehow set an order. So. All right. I'll say thank you to the League of Women Voters for a great event, coming from the residents of University Heights. Obviously, common topics, but it's good to hear some new questions at the same time. I'd say, together, we have a great opportunity to provide a new direction for the city. I hope that when you look at the information that I presented, and either through tonight or through the website, you can feel comfortable that, at the end of the day, my goal is to provide what's best for all University Heights residents, not just for a particular segment. So with that, one of the things that should be maintained is that the fiscal responsibility within the city, we do have to live within our means, but at the same time, we have to provide a good value for the dollars that are spent, because sometimes there's some, we tend to be visual creatures, and to be able to see that can work out in the long run. We have to keep in mind that we are a family-oriented community, we should embrace that, and we should encourage the development of that within our neighborhoods. So with that, you can visit my website, coonifercouncil.com, or on Facebook, Christopher Cooney for University Heights City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we will hear from Brian King.
Once again, I'd like to thank everyone involved for putting on this, the seat. And next, I want to remind you of some important dates. If you have not updated your voter registration, you have until Monday to do that. Early voting starts on Tuesday. It's just the beginning of voting. So the election day is November 2nd, the end of voting. So you have that entire month of October and to do November 2nd to vote. I appreciate having this opportunity tonight. I'd encourage you to visit my website, king4uh.com, or to follow me on Facebook or Instagram, also, king4uh. I invite you to ask any questions, and I look forward to talking with you.
Okay. The Heights City Council and our program tonight. I'd like to thank the Heights for keeping me on track here, and I would like to thank all our volunteers who made this evening possible, and thank all of you who are viewing this forum. Don't forget your copy of The Voter's Guide, that will be inside the October issue of The Heights Observer, which will be available beginning tomorrow in many local businesses and institutions around town. And most importantly, remember to vote on November 2nd. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, thanks for keeping me on track. I'm so sorry that I'm just like, I'm flipping papers and...
Thank you to all of you. That was a particularly well-done and classy forum, and I've been a lot of...
Every time? No, I was moving stuff around. I have a system that I kind of keep things moving.
No, this was a...
Good luck to you.
What a substance, a lot of meat, a lot of U2, and a very classy, respectful group of people. If I lived in your city, I would have a devil of a time deciding.
I think so. Did we get the live stream going?
No, I mean, everybody had...
I'm hoping that we did. They had some tough ones, didn't they?